Good morning, welcome to our Board of Accounting Commissioners for Sweetwater County on this first day of November. Here we go. Happy post Halloween, hope you all had a great time. If. You do have a quorum present here in chambers, all of our commissioners are present with us today. If you'd rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance and after the pledge, remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public, the nation stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Did it go long enough, Doc?
Huh?
Is that long enough?
Oh, that was perfect, I'll tell you what.
Perfect.
I'll put in a good word for you.
Thank you, I need all the good words I can get.
You're funny.
Commissioners, we have an agenda before us, what is your pleasure? I will note that we are going to remove tab G. They will be returning to present to us at a later date. Any other?
Mr. Chairman, sorry, my, my computer's not connecting, I don't, the last tab before executive session.
Last tab would be J.
We need to remove that as well, I do not have the information needed to discuss.
So tab G and tab J removed.
I'm sorry, I jinxed all the computers, mine's the only one working today.
I, I had a hard time with mine this morning too, so.
Connection.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Yeah, I'd also like to, I guess we need to get a motion, he said I'll need to amend the agenda to add, that's for an addition of legal contract and executive.
Thank you, was that a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wendling.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the tab J removed, which is discussion of PIO job duties. And the removal of, help me out, was it G?
G, yep.
Tab G, which is informational presentations on the McKenzie Home Project, a transitional home for single mothers. As well as to add under executive session. Legal contracts.
Thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Onto our consent agenda. What is your pleasure there, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Film.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Thank you. We're on to our county residents' concerns and comments, and always compliments. We love the compliments, I'm always fishing for them, so. Please come up to the microphone and state your name who you are representing today with your comments. And we ask you to limit them to two or three minutes, so, thank you.
I'll try my best, my name is Jeanette Howman and I'm here representing Daggett County EMS. I'm here with a few concerns that we have. With Castle Rock, I'm here on their behalf for Daggett and also myself personally. After watching the last commissioners meeting, it raised a lot of concerns for us as Daggett County EMS. I had actually brought you guys a copy of the current contract that we have with Castle Rock. Where you can see that it is not defined as far as the boundaries and who covers what boundaries. Which is what I was trying to work with Castle Rock over. And when Bailey had made the comment that they have actually been responding into Daggett for us. I took it upon myself to print out all of our logs to show that that is not true. In fact, we have been covering our own area quite adequately and have been for the past three years. We are actually a fully staffed ambulance service, we are volunteer, but my volunteers are residents of Daggett County. I have actually just hired a new paramedic. I myself am finishing paramedic and we have one more who will be, so we are a very adequate service who is capable of covering. I do not do this job for the money, I do not do this for any glory, I do it for the people. I am a Sweetwater County resident and I spend a lot of time at the gorge and in Daggett County. If my family is there, I want an ambulance service that is close. And if you read the contract that is currently stated, and if you guys would like a copy, I brought plenty. It's not defined who responds. Washum is in Wyoming, McKinnon is in Wyoming, we have covered both areas. For Castle Rock. The one time that they did respond to Washum, it was a 50-minute response and that is documented on our spillment. Washum is roughly a less than 10-minute response for Daggett County. So my concern here is the citizens and what we need to do to rectify that so they can get adequate response time, I don't want people dying. So that is my first concern. On a personal note, I am concerned of some of the other comments that were made by Bailey. Stating that she had hired 95% of the staff of Sweetwater County or Sweetwater medics. I am one of those employees, I am currently a Wyoming intermediate and I was never contacted for an interview. One of the other paramedics that works there was told they have enough ALS, he's a 20-year paramedic who is absolutely amazing at his job. They would not hire him. There are other paramedics that were also not hired by Castle Rock. I want the best care for my family, my family all lives in Sweetwater County and I am concerned that we are not going to get that. So, there you go. Those are my concerns and I would like to work, work with you commissioners on actually updating this contract and having it more defined. So would you guys like a copy of this?
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Would you give a copy of? This, I'm sure he probably has it, but. To John.
Yeah, the call lost. And your number, your number. Whatever number.
Thank you, other comments, questions, concerns?
Thank you.
Anything Cindy? Thank you. We're on to tab B then, approval of the 2022 Wyoming Family-to-Family Health Information Center Mini Grant Award Agreement. You're seeing a marshal with us today. And the sheriff.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'd also like to acknowledge that not only is our county sheriff, John Grossnickel here with me. But also Deputy Caitlin Sarah Goza. Who is a deputy at our county detention center. So, let me proceed. So the University of Wyoming awarded a maximum $5,000 Family-to-Family Health Information Center Mini Grant. To Sweetwater County that requires no cash match. The purpose of this funding is to support Wyoming programs. That help children and youth of special healthcare needs and build and maintain positive, healthy relationships within their communities. At this point, I'd like to point out that this is our law enforcement agency who requested to apply for this grant, not a outside. Excuse me, agency, so it's pretty exciting because of that. So the project consists of starting a therapy canine program to support mental health for juveniles held in the detention center. The spending will be used to purchase and train a dog named Christina, no, just kidding. Or Chris, in several therapeutic specialties that would be assigned a handler and be on site Monday through Fridays. So, we are all aware of the mental health challenges going on, not only in the country, but specifically in Wyoming. Regarding youth age 15 to 24 or young adults, Wyoming ranks fourth highest in the nation. I'd like to expand on that fact, so we already know Wyoming has its challenges. At the detention center. In 2021, the average length of stay for a juvenile ranged from just under three days to 99.13 days. That was for 46 unduplicated individuals, sometimes the numbers going in history are as high as 60, they come from different counties too. So when we talk about this animal assisted therapy. I just want to tell you why it's important, it helps with stress, anxiety, depression, autism, ADHD, addiction. Emotional and behavioral conditions in children, we emphasize this in the grant application. Now, when you take already a problem or challenges in society. When you look at youth or young adults that are put in the detention center. Nearly three out of four individuals incarcerated suffer from mental health or substance abuse issues such as. Conduct disorder, anxiety and depression, depression. This is a huge disproportionate number compared to society at large. So the detention center is an ideal location for this project, which was actually brought to my attention by the sheriff's office. So again, they deal with some of the most at-risk people in our society, yet this project, as simple as it seems, I mean, just seeing a dog, everyone smiles. It is to deal with positive communication, lower stress and anxiety, enhance self-esteem, reduce aggression, reduce loneliness. And increase emotional awareness, so. As I proceed, so the war to $5,000 will target purchasing the dog and re-training for this specialty. I did emphasize in the budget that there are going to be other costs. I'm hoping to apply for some other foundation grants if they're suitable. There was one I was applying for last week that we are not eligible to apply for, but anyhow, I'm going to continue to try, so there's upfront costs. And I don't know if we have FTEs for dogs, but there will be ongoing expenses. We could start adopting, but. So, so I mean, as you can imagine, there'll be food and supplies and, you know, the shots and all that, and Caitlin certainly can address that, so. That is all I have to say, we were actually meeting with the project manager at the state. At, this morning about this, so I'd like to give the opportunity for Caitlin or the sheriff to discuss this, who really deserve the credit, so.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Um, so I just want to talk about, I'm very passionate about the therapy dog, I really like the mental illness aspect of things. Sorry, I'm a soft speaker, I do like the, I really am passionate about the mental illness part of things. We've actually had the opportunity of bringing in a therapy canine from Green River into the detention center and it has really shown. Great. Just, the inmates have been very. Just excited and they ask me every day when I'm getting mine and when this opportunity, we'll have it in there every day, so it's kind of. Just a good opportunity for the detention center and specifically the juveniles. Especially the ones that come from out of county, we, like Christina said, we deal with the most. Behavioral challenged juveniles and adults, so, and not only will it be a benefit for the detention center, we'll also. Use it in the community for times of crisis, so all around, it just has like endless possibilities, especially since it's the first one in a detention center. So, and there's also possibility of us working with. Our areas with Fremont County has one on the road and then we have Green River PD and we've already started a training with them. I don't have my dog yet, but I did, I got to sit in on a training for that and it's just been really great so far, so.
Mr. Chairman and, excuse me, commissioners, first of all, I have to give credit to Caitlin, she had this, this idea and she, like she said, she's passionate about it. She did all the legwork and got with Christina and we're at this point right now, like she said, we'll be the first detention center in the United States to have such. A canine program. And the data that is shown from the agencies that have it outside. Clearly shows the impact and the positive behavior that comes from having this, we're excited, it's a lot less. As, as far as the cost than our traditional canines that you see on the street are working dogs. But it's going to have a huge impact and you hear across Wyoming, we need to do something with mental health, well, the sheriff's office, we're sick of hearing it. So we want to put our foot forward and start doing something about it, but again, great job on Caitlin's part, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, yes.
Yes, Commissioner Tullman.
Either one of you, how, how many youth do you have in the detention center and how are you going to work with them individually with just, you're just going to have one dog, right?
Correct, and it, it depends, it fluctuates on the numbers that we have, we try to keep it eight juveniles to one detention officer, that's what the standard is. But with, with the programs they have, you, you can use a dog with all the, the juveniles at one time. A lot of it is crisis intervention, we have a lot of mental health crisis in there and the data has shown that these canines actually diffuse that. And if we can do that and then work further with the, the other programs, again, we're strides above anybody else in the state and the country.
Thank you.
Any other questions, any comments? Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wendling.
I'll make a motion that we approve. The 2022 Wyoming Family-to-Family Health. Mini Grant Award Agreement and authorize chairman to sign all documents.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would second that.
Thank you, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Good job, team.
Thank you. Excellent work, and if you want to ring by the commission office anytime, reduce stress and all, that'd be great. Totally take it. Tab C, transfer fire command truck to Wam Sutter. Mr. Zimmerman.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Jim Zimmerman, Sweetwater County Fire Warden. What we have before you today is a request by Wam Sutter Fire for a command vehicle, we have two command vehicles left. It's Mike's old command truck and TJ's old command truck. As you well remember, the newer command truck was transferred to the sheriff's office. Few business meetings ago, so what we have are these two and. Assistant Chief Jesus Chavez is here, he's in the back, he can answer any questions, but basically it comes down to them needing. Jesus is now on full-time staff and so them needing another command vehicle, this Mike's truck would have two radios in, correct me if I'm wrong, probably a BK and a Motorola. Okay, so they has two radios in, so it would be something that would give them more features, the truck itself would give them more room to carry equipment to the scene of a fire. So it's something that they're needing, they're requesting, they're asking for, so we bring it to you bef- before you today. The details on the truck are, it's a 2015 Ford F-250 Crew Cab. It's in good condition and it has 166,000 miles on. Myself and Jesus are here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, questions? Seeing none, what is your?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Yeah, Jim, Mr. Zimmerman, a question would be, there would be use of it, we wouldn't be giving it till it would be like, like the agreements with the other vehicles are doing while they're helping cover, correct?
Exactly, it's like the rest of our equipment, they're using it to handle by contract what the county is still responsible for, the county fire.
And we would add, and, and I guess, Mr. Deleon, we would add that to the contract eventually or what, or is it just like other equipment is needed and vowed?
Yeah, yes, those should be coming shortly.
Okay, thank you, those are my questions.
Thank you, other questions?
I, Mr. Chairman, one more thing, I just want to say as we look through the fire reports, Jesus, you guys have done a great job and what you're doing over there and. I've often sat through this fire transition, when you look at the numbers of almost an average of 80 calls a year with the volunteer fire department of 12, what you guys have done over there. Have been fantastic for years and I appreciate the service Wam Sutter Fire provides to our county, so thank you, Jesus, and pass that to Dusty and the crew. Will do. That's all.
Thank you, any other questions? Very good, what is your pleasure, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
I'd like to make a request, make a motion that, to authorize the use of. The command fire truck of the 2015 Ford F-250 Crew Cab with 166,141 miles to be used as per the contract with Wam Sutter Fire.
Thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? No. Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you, commissioners, one last thing, since I have the platform. November is no shave November for all men to bring awareness for men's testicular and.
Prostate.
Prostate, thank you, you, you got that from that, didn't you, prostate cancer, thank, thank you, commissioners.
You're well on your way. Tab D. Marty Dernovich, welcome aboard.
Morning commissioners. Let's see, what do I have first on? So the first thing that we have on the agenda is the. Video surveillance and security system for the detention center. As you recall, a couple of meetings ago, we came before the board with the proposals we received and asked for additional time to review. Two of those proposals that were outstanding. Since that time, myself and, and the committee that was involved in that, we call it the selection committee for lack of a better name for the group. We evaluated their proposals, we went to, not all of us, but some of us attended a site visit in Sublet County. And in Laramie County. Kubel was the one, the vendor that had systems in both of those places, so. The, two of the detention office or the lieutenants, I should say, from the detention office. Tim Knight and one of his staffs attended both, I went to the one in Sublet County, so we actually got to see the system in operation. Ask questions, ask how the install went, kind of get some insights on that, find out if they're happy with the systems and both of those gave high reviews of Kubel. Then we seen a online demo of APEC solutions. APEC is out of New Mexico, so they didn't have anything close enough that we could physically go and, and see, but. They did give us a, a very good thorough online demonstration. To be quite honest, commissioners, the committee said we could have flipped a coin. And either one of these providers would have been excellent for the purpose of what we are trying to get at. And so it really came down to location of service and the cost of their proposals. Kubel being the cheaper cost. APEC had some really good. What I guess experience, they've been in business a little longer, a couple of years longer than Kubel. But their cost, of course, is about $300,000 more. We like the idea of Kubel because there are other people in the state using their system, so they can share information, hopefully. You know, if we have service calls, they can come out, kind of make a loop and maybe potentially save all of the county's money in that respect. And that was the other thing on APEC, their maintenance agreement, we felt was a little steep. Was $50,000 a year, they come out a couple quarterly and service the equipment, but compared to Kubel. There was quite a difference in cost, so with that said, and of course, the sheriff's here and, and some of the staff that was involved in Tim, Tim's here, he can probably talk more about the. Actual detail, fine details of the systems, but. The committee felt like our recommendation to the board would be to award to Kubel and ask that we send a letter of intent to award a contract. Kubel would like to come out and spend like a week at our site and, and get everything finalized before an actual contract is signed. And then of course, until allow the chairman to sign all documents, so that's our, our recommendation to the board.
Thank you, questions for Marty or others regarding the. Security and video system?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Yeah, I don't, the, the information we've been given is very thorough and I think there, we even talked about it at the last meeting, the, the thoroughness of this committee and the fact that we. We did as much as we could to do onsite visits with every piece of equipment, I, I think the committee needs to be commended, this, this was a huge needed project. And a big undertaking and I really appreciate the work you did and the final results, I think are indicated by your work and so. I just want to say thank you for the work you've done on this project.
Thank you, other comments, questions? Then what is your pleasure, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Film.
I will make a motion to. Approve the. Awarding of to Kubel Group at the amount of 874,720. And authorize the chairman to sign all needed documents.
Thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tullman.
Where, where is Kubel at, coming out?
They're coming out of Fort Collins.
Oh, so they're close.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Commissioner Shane Film.
What's the timeframe for them to get this all installed?
We originally had it by the end of January, but because we took a little more time, we need to sit down with them and, and come up with a timeline. We're hoping to have that done, I'm going to estimate by the end of April, May at the latest. Am I correct in that assumption, Tim?
Thank you, other questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? No. Thank you. Thank you Marty, why don't you stick around for the next one as well?
Okay, I'll, I'll see what I can.
Do we have to state that we're using the ARPA funds, she had that listed in there, do we have to state that we're using our funds to pay for this? Do we have to state that we're using the ARPA funds that she had that listed in there? Do we have to state that we're using our funds to pay for this?
Uh, no, because it was a project that was already approved at the time you guys approved it. Okay. So the next items on, on the agenda is for a skid steer loader. And a wheel loader for Roden Bridge and. Facility, the skid steer is going to be used through multiple departments, uh, under Public Works. So the, the first, uh, bid that we received, um, is the skid steer loader. And we received one bid, uh, from Wyoming Machinery. Uh, with the skid steer loader, as you can see, we're asking for the loader itself. Uh, several attachments that can be used, uh, throughout different parts of the county. So we're asking for a. Six-way dozer blade, a brush cutter, collet forks, uh, gravel forks, cold planer, landscape rake, snow plow. And a snow blower that are all the attachments that will go on this piece of equipment. Uh, the final price with all the attachments is a hundred and fifty one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five oh one. To Wyoming Machinery. And we're asking the board for approval of that piece of equipment.
Thank you. Questions for Marty? It sounds like it's gonna be the Swiss Army knife of skid steers. Have everything on there. Got one of those toothpicks?
Yeah. Jean said I even get a drive it, so I'm excited.
Questions at all, comments? Then what is your pleasure, Commissioners?
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Film.
I'll make a motion to approve the lease award, um, for the loader and skid steer to Wyoming Machinery for the total amount of. One hundred and fifty one thousand, nine thirty-five and one penny. And authorize chairman to sign.
Perfect, thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I would second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? No.
The next, uh, piece of equipment is the wheel loader. And this is mainly for our Roden Bridge operation. Um, again, we received two bids, one from Kamatsu Equipment. Totaling two hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And one from Wyoming Machinery for a total of, I'm gonna give you two totals because they are, um. Wyoming Machinery added an additional warranty that, uh, Kamatsu didn't offer, um. So Wyoming Machinery's totaled to be comparing what we expect, uh, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-four five. However, if, if the board accepts our recommendation, we would like to add the extended warranty for five thousand, eight oh four twenty-five. Making the total cost with warranty to Wyoming Machinery of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy cents. Um, we are asking that the, uh, board award to Wyoming Machinery due to the Kamatsu machine not meeting spec. I've provided you the, the spec differentials between the two machines. The Kamatsu machine is, is somewhat smaller than, than the one from Wyoming Machinery. And, uh, uh, Gene went through the specs. He's actually the one that did the comparisons. And he feels that, that those exceptions are, are non-acceptable. And I'm sure Gene can explain that in more detail if you'd like.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners? Seeing none, then what is your pleasure?
Must be one computer down there working that has a total amount, Mister Chairman. I'm still rotating mine, just, I know I have to work off my phone agenda, but, uh. Mary, is your computer working?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the.
Can you pull up that?
The wording up here, so I can't get it.
Please for the amount.
I can't open the tabs.
No, I can't either. I'm, but I, I'm on my phone, but I don't have the, uh.
I can give you the totals again if you'd like. Uh, from Wyoming Machinery, the total is two hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-four seventy.
Mister Chairman, oh.
Go ahead, Mary.
Oh, I would make the motion to accept the bid from Wyoming Machinery for the amount of. State it again.
Two hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-four seventy.
And authorize the chairman to sign. Is this have a warranty?
That's with the warrant.
With the warranty.
Yes.
Included.
Perfect. I thought I'm not the only one struggling. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
Okay, oh, there's more to this.
Let's go.
Still should have the lead.
Here comes the best part.
This is the best part. Money.
Uh, yeah, exactly. So with these two pieces of equipment, uh, when Mr. Legursky submitted his budget, uh, he did this as lease payments. Um, so we anticipated that the board would accept our recommendations and. So we, I sent out from the time we received the bids for the equipment. I sent out to all the financial institutes that usually submit proposals to us for a government lease. And we received one from a bank and Wyoming Machinery also provided us an lease option. Um, US Bank, we are, so I took the two that you just awarded, which totals four hundred and twenty-three thousand. Six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. I sent that out to the banks for a three-year lease. And, and a four-year lease. Now, the difference between US Bank and Wyoming Machinery. Wyoming Machinery is really a lease. So it'd be like you or I going and leasing a, a vehicle to drive after so many years and, and you're allotted so many hours of mileage. Then you pay over if it goes or, or you don't. And then at the end of the lease, you can either. Buy out the vehicle or the piece of equipment, or, or they'll exchange it for new. US Bank is what they call a municipal lease. At the end of the three years, we own that piece of equipment. There's no, they don't care if we put ten thousand hours on it in a year or a hundred thousand. At the end of the three years or the four years, the piece of equipment becomes ours. So after talking with Jean, we felt that, um, it would be best, he doesn't see the, the skid steer is gonna get used, but we don't see it. Needing to be exchanged in three years or five years. And the same thing with the loader. I've been here thirty years and I've bought two loaders in my thirty years here, so. Uh, we don't see that as needing replaced in, in five years. So with that, we would recommend that the board, uh, approve the lease submitted, the lease proposal submitted by US Bank. Yeah, with a rate of five point oh eight for three-year payments of a hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and ninety-two eighty-one. They have no filing fees, so the total payoff at the end of the three years. Would be four hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-two cents. And allow the chairman to sign all documents.
Thank you, Marty. Questions?
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Wendling.
Marty, I think this week there could be an increase on interest rates from the feds.
Correct.
Which we're expecting. Um, this is locked in.
This is locked in.
Thank you. Other questions? Then what is your pleasure, Commissioners? On the funding request to go with US Bank.
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Quick question, and as we look at this financially, um, I don't think it's a horrible rate of five oh eight. Um, but, um, um, you know, are we in a position with some of the ARPAs and dollars around? Would we be better off at looking at just pay for the four fifty-one upfront and avoiding some of those interest costs since we do have some of those dollars there?
I would refer that to Christina just based on the bidding process of our.
Yeah. We. Mister Chairman.
Yeah, well, no, we kinda did.
We didn't, we didn't do the advertisement because we just sent to the local.
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, like, before we go into the interest, are there other options? These are whatever out with the general fund and those things, so.
So the answer was there wasn't sufficient funding and.
At the time, yes.
Thank you. Uh, other comments, questions? Okay, now what's your pleasure?
Mister Chairman, I would attempt to make this motion.
Go get them.
To, uh, approve the, uh, lease option with US Bank at five point oh eight percent for a total three-year lease. To own for four hundred and fifty-one thousand, one seventy-eight forty-two and authorize chairman to sign.
Thank you. A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marty.
Are, are we gonna take a break at the scheduled time?
I'd imagine.
Hey, Marty. Jean, a break. Could I visit with you, please? Okay, thanks.
Tab F, we have holiday and benefit discussion with Mister McLean. Thanks for coming today.
Morning, Mister Chairman, Ken Commissioners. Um, get basically four things, try to get resolved a little bit regarding the holiday season. Thing first, uh, one we'll, we'll address, uh, is whether there's any additional. Time that the board wishes to approve off around Christmas. We'll have the same discussion about the New Year's break. Um, and then, uh, we also wanted to try to resolve. Um, in the past, some of the boards have approved like a Christmas bonus or some other things. If there's any inclination to do that, we need to get going on that. And then get some approval, uh, relative to the, uh, Christmas cards and those things and how you'd like that. That addressed, um, so maybe just take them one at a time, Mister Chairman, if that's okay.
That's all I can handle. One at a time. It's easy doeser.
You won't need a calculator, I don't think, for this one.
Okay.
Um. Relative to, um, the holidays, um, as you know, the, uh, Christmas this year. Um, is on a Sunday, so we'd normally observe the holiday on a Monday. Um, and so per policy, the Monday, the twenty-sixth, uh, would be the holiday. Um, checking with a few of the, the other entities, the City of Green River kinda tracks with the, with the county, so. Um, the City of Rock Springs will be closed, uh, Friday, uh, and Monday. And, uh, those folks associated with the courts here will kind of follow our lead on that. So if, if the. Um, border inclined, um, you know, it certainly would be reasonable to consider an additional day on, uh, Friday, which would be the. Twenty-third.
Questions, comments, discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I would definitely support time off on Friday, the, uh, twenty-third for. For staff, you know, as Christmas allows them a little more time, it's families, a little more time to get ready. Um, it still is not the last day of the month for. The Treasurers Office for license plates and titles, command of the clerk, so. It's as much as it's another day that the public. May not, uh. Have access to courthouse, they still have the whole next week to do their business before the end of the month, so. I, I think that's appropriate to look at, uh. The twenty-third, either it's a whole day or a partial day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Yeah, I would agree about the twenty-third, and I'd rather look a full day than a partial day. And talking to a couple of the department heads. They thought in some of the departments, the half a day would make more sense, but in some of the departments, that half day is a little more difficult. So that would be one thought there. I also, you know, um, I guess some coming attractions that next year, um, uh, we won't be making this decision. There'll be another set of commissioners. And one thing I would recommend is something I've talked about in the past, but something I've never pushed hard enough that. At the beginning of the year, I almost think we should start having the discussions of what we're gonna do with the December, January time off. In January, February, way ahead of schedule, so employees can actually make use and make plans based upon what those schedule changes are. Understand why we've waited till later in the year, but I think it could be beneficial in the long run to make those decisions earlier. So just a, aside. To, um, any fellow, uh, new co- um, remaining commissioners and any, and any other incoming commissioners, just some insight and thought. Um, but, um, I would be okay with the entirety on the twenty-third. Um, I know we're not, we're going one at a time, but I would be more opposed to the entire day on, um. On, in, um, before, on the Friday, the week after, based upon license plates and those things, so. Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Wendling.
Yeah, just a clarification. I believe at our last meeting, we instructed HR. To make sure they come to us plenty of time ahead to the commission, no matter. Whether it's, won't be us, but it'll be next sitting commission and future sitting commissions make it part of policy. That it's brought up at a certain time, plenty of time ahead to meet what Commissioner Lloyd has said. So. I think that's in the works. It's just gonna be a matter of, uh, HR staying on top of it and making sure that is brought forward to the, uh. Commissioner sitting in chamber at that time, only far ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. It, also, I think the, the other points we'll take, and, and I think we discussed is that the, at least at the budget year, we could certainly do a year, but there. Our potential budget implications for certain departments covering, especially Sheriff's Department. So I think the thought was is to make that part of the, the budget approval process, so that can get wrapped up in the cost for the department budgets, yeah.
Good. Other questions or comments? And what is your pleasure, Commissioners?
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Wendling.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we, uh, award December twenty-third. As a paid holiday for the county staff.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, next one I think we'll address is, is, uh, the New Year's. Uh, Commissioner Lloyd touched on that, I, uh, briefly a little bit, uh. Uh, that is on Saturday, so Friday would be the normal holiday. The question is whether or not, uh, well, I guess it's on Sunday, New Year's Eve. On Saturday, whether, uh, we wanted to do something on Friday or not.
Commissioner Lloyd's expressed a thought on that. Other, other thoughts, Commissioners? So Friday would be the last business day of the year, actually, technically.
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Wendling.
Yeah, I would, uh, since that is the last day of the year, it's the last day to, a lot of people, if you take a look at the last day of the month. Throughout the year, historically, this courthouse has lines. For titles, for license plates and those types of things. And until we get, uh. Some of the, until the commissions of the future. Decide they wanna update and become more technology proficient in offering titles and. License plates through other forms other than people having to stand in line. We're always gonna have those lines. So I would hate to see the last day of the month. Being a day that people don't have an opportunity to get their plates and titles, so I'd like to see that. I'd like to see the courthouse left open that day. Now, what we do from there is my standpoint. Thank you.
Other thoughts?
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Film.
It makes sense to me that, um. Leaving the courthouse open is. Imperative, um, for the service to the community. Um, so that would make sense to maybe a word of floating holiday to our employees. And allow them to use that, um, again, potentially throughout the holiday season to spend more time with family.
Other suggestion? Thank you. Any other thoughts? And I would entertain a motion if there is one.
Mister Chairman. I'll make a motion to award a floating holiday, um, to be utilized, I would say, before. The end of the fiscal year, um. For that Friday. To all employees.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, just to be clear, I think maybe we should include in the motion that the courthouse will remain, must remain open or the. Yeah, courthouse will remain open during that period. I think that's an important component.
Yeah, I agree. I'll include that courthouse must remain open.
Okay. Is that true in the second as well, Commissioner Lloyd?
What's that?
Is that true as well?
Yeah, I'll stay with the second.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I almost wonder if we should hold on this vote, and I should have not seconded it. The more I thought about it, based upon the fact, I know our next discussion will be a concept of a bonus. And I wonder if maybe instead of the floating holiday, we see what we decide as a bonus and then and then and then depending on there, maybe come back to that floating holiday. So. Just the thought process. So if I vote no against the floating holiday, it will be because I think we should, if we're going to do a bonus, we can have that discussion, then come back. So that's where I'm at.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Film.
I'll withdraw my motion and make motion to table.
We have motion to table. Need a second on that?
Yeah, I think you do.
We have a second to table?
I'll pull it.
No? Okay. Then we will. We have a motion and a second for. Excuse me. Motion was withdrawn. Okay. Then we go on to our. Discussion regarding incentive, one-time incentives.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. And again, this is something that boards have done off and on. Depending on financial circumstances in the boards. Is it's always appreciated around the holiday season, some additional. Money for folks. And so just kind of keep the math easy. You should have a summary, give you an idea of costs in here, which is. $500 and then the board can obviously multiply for whatever amounts that you want to approve from there, give you a good idea. Obviously, we the any approved bonus is not eligible for the elected officials. That would. Be in conflict with the statute, but as far as compensation. But. The other issue is that we have a few grant employees. Typically, the grants don't cover this sort of thing, so we'd have to, if we were inclined to include them in that. I would encourage us to do that if if we did just cover that that cost for those grant employees, the few that we have. And then. You know, we have a few part-time employees which we would prorate and based on their hours of service. And so you have a kind of a cost summary in there, basically. At $500, that's 122,000, obviously, a thousand would be twice that at 244 roughly. And that's a cost for all budgeted positions. Obviously, we have some that are vacant right now, but that's sort of the worst case scenarios at the 122.
Thank you. Lot of math there. The different classes.
All the calculators coming out again.
Yeah. The questions regarding the the one-time incentive. Then what is your pleasure, Commissioners?
Chairman.
Commissioner Wendling.
I'll make a motion that we. Award our employees a one-time bonus. For $500.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wendling.
I think this is a good time to express the reasoning why is.
Excellent time.
Because it's discussion time with the motion, but. I think if we've been watching and following things closely over the last six, eight months. We've watched interest rates rise from feds. We've are going to experience, I truly believe, another interest rizer, which totally impacts people's living. And that type of thing. We've seen prices at the grocery stores climb immensely. We've seen ourselves this last year. For all the very good reasons, award increased pays to. Well, two years ago to department heads and then also now to elected officials. And we did award cost of living raises to our staff, but we also recognize that cost of living raises to those staff are far insignificant compared to. What we gave elected officials and what we gave department heads and that. And with that, with taking care of families and that type of thing. And the need for to keep up with inflation and that. I just really. Think we've tried to do as much as we can, but I don't think we've done our employees. In the trenches. The justice that they truly do deserve. And I know we've made commitments to continue to look at things and improve things for them. But it's a Christmas season, increased costs, and I think we're in a position, we have not drawn on our. Our. Reserves at all for our budget or anything. We, at one time, we were planning on drawing on reserves and we did not. This year, and I think it's. An investment to let our employees know that they're. Very important to us and we appreciate the work they do, but it gives them an opportunity to provide just a little bit more for their families. We also know that. If they get that money, they're going to go out in the community and spend it, which impacts businesses, impacts everything along that line. So it's a gain. And so I see it as our investment into the county and into the communities. And I just feel that it's the right thing to do, although I want to make it clear. Bonuses, and I heard this from somebody, he's in the audience. And I got to give him credit for it. I just wished I'd heard it eight years ago. Bonuses do not make house payments or car payments. And that's. Where you get support to your country, to your community. Cost of living raises will allow people to make house payments and car payments. And I'll tell you what, it makes so much sense. So. I believe we, this is the right thing to do for our employees. And especially now with everything that's going to go on and continue to go on through cost of food and stuff like that for our families. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Wendling. Commissioner Wendling, just for clarification, would you, do you think mind adding a timetable of when this would be paid out?
Oh, I need to be paid out with their December check.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
We'll go with.
Either way, I don't.
Go ahead, Gary.
I was just going to say, I would recommend that we do it as soon as we can, work with payroll to get it out as soon as possible. And I think they've already had some discussions. So I think. Typically, we've cut another check so that we could kind of associate that with the Christmas cards going out and the message from the board in that. So we'd like to get it out, you know, before, no later than Thanksgiving holiday.
Okay, so a separate.
Board if, yeah.
Separate payroll.
Yeah.
That work as soon as possible?
That works great.
Yeah, just make it work. People deserve it.
Done it before, right? So let's not mess it up. Commissioner Shane Film.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I I agree with everything that Commissioner Wendling is saying, and my question is, is $500 enough? We did 400, I think. Last year with the cares funding, is that? I mean, is that enough? I think that after taxes come out. A lot of people are looking at in the $300 range if we award 500. That's just my thought.
You can amend it. You can amend the motion. After it's, I mean, it's got to be seconded and it's got to be seconded and amended.
Did we not have a second? I apologize.
I think we did. I think.
I thought we did.
I think.
Yes, okay.
Okay, we have a second.
What what are what are the other commissioners' thoughts on that?
What are yours? What what kind of dollars are you looking at?
I was I was looking at 750 or 1,000, and that was before coming into the meeting today. I think that 500 has been fairly traditional. And I think with the increase in interest rates and the increase in gas and the increase in food, that a little bit more goes a long ways for our employees right now.
Other thoughts? Commissioner Tillman, you look like you have a thought.
No, I supported it. I think time they take the taxes out, you're right, they're not going to get 500. At 750, they're probably going to get what? 650, 600?
It depends on what they're.
Yeah.
Is, but.
Commissioner Lloyd, any thoughts?
I'm doing math in my head. And I was a psychology.
I can hear the, I can hear the wheels turning.
So, hey, you know, um. Yeah, I my concern sometimes when you do give the 500 or $500 bonus, it doesn't always come out right. I do think we're in a financial position, and I wish I could ask Bonnie a couple of questions at this point, but I would be okay with a 750 kind of doing the numbers in my head. I guess I'm analyzing the numbers more being a psychologist guy than a math guy, but I think that I think that that would be good. And I think if, you know, when you look at it, what the cost would be. On a floating holiday, I think this is a very fair situation for our employees. So I could go 750.
Mr. Chairman. I will make a motion amendment to increase that from 500 to 1,000.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend our original motion. Gary, what does a what does a day off cost us?
That's a good question, and it's a lot. I mean, if you look at it, it's a lot. I mean.
It's like a quarter million, I think.
Yeah, I mean, if you if you think it's, yeah, I'll I'll let you know. I mean, it it's expensive.
It's more, what I remember the number, it's more than what we'd be giving on a $1,000 bonus.
Way more, yeah.
Yeah, wasn't it like in the 8, 900 range?
No, it's 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 like 300, some thousand.
I remember it was significant.
The one, the one thing I will say is if we. Increase the bonus, Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I should have gone through you.
Mr. Commissioner.
If we increase the bonus, I I won't support a floating holiday.
That's what I was asking about.
I will not support a floating holiday.
Very good.
Can't do it all.
Okay, where are we at? We have a amendments.
Got to vote on the amendment, chief.
All right, and we have a second. We've had discussion. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the amended motion of $1,000 one-time incentive, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay, because we talked about 750, now we jumped to 1,000. So I would say 750, but.
Thank you. It's duly noted. And then we have an original motion with a second.
I think the amended motion.
Good to go. Drawn.
We'll draw the first motion. So it's 1,000.
1,000. Okay, any further discussion on the floating holidays then? Floating holiday?
I would suggest it dies for lack of discussion. Motion.
Very good. Gary.
Final item, a little simpler. You know what calculators needed? I had, Ashley, you should have in your email, I have some print copies also, if you'd like to take a look at it. If you could just get some consensus on the cards as soon as possible, we could dovetail these. So I have some printed ones. If you'd like to take a look at them, I'll hand those out real quickly, but if you could just maybe let the chairman know.
If we if we have decided on that, then can the bonus check be put in the cards? Okay.
We'll probably do the bonus by direct deposit, but we can put it in there.
Yeah. Sounds good.
I think they're on both sides.
Lovely. Thank you.
You can decide now if you want to. If you want to wait, that's fine. We'll get this other stuff put together. I'll get some costs, final cost together in terms of the bonus. And we'll work with payroll, get you a final date when we think those can get out. And we'll get the. Final bonus cost to the board, so you know where those are at.
I like the Christmas tree with happy holidays. Option A.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Option A.
I'm not picky when it comes to Christmas cards, so I would go with the majority.
All right, I'm with you, fellas.
I'll go E.
Thank you.
Just to be contrary.
He's choosing option F.
It's off the page as usual.
That's the hardest decision I've had to make in four years.
It is a difficult one.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to make a statement, though. I did oppose the $1,000, but that does not mean that I don't think our employees, they are very valuable and we appreciate everything they do. And. So I want to thank them very much for what they do.
Thank you. At this point, we have a break scheduled. Before we do so. Love to recognize that we have two Commissioner Lex in the audience with us. Appreciate to you guys, Island Richards and Rob Slaughter. Thanks for coming by and happy to visit with you. Also have job shadows today from the Public Service Academy. If you guys take just a moment and come up and introduce yourselves and say something really fun or funny or. You know, Chandler, you can go first. Got to come up to the microphone, introduce yourself. Tell us that you got the world figured out.
Hi, guys. We're just here to job shadow, I guess. My name is Chandler Smith. We are here from the APS Academy. And we are here to just watch and. Learn more about what you guys do.
Thank you.
My name's Brooklyn. I don't know. I think it's pretty cool. Just being here.
Wow, I like you.
Being able to job shadow everybody, all the different opportunities.
Thank you.
My name is Avery Almore, and I'm also very glad to be here and learn more about you guys and what you do.
Thank you.
I'm Emma Lash, and it's a, it's really cool so far seeing what you guys have been doing.
Best parts to come now. You get to go in this room over here, and there's donuts. Happy to visit with you, answering any questions you have. So thanks for what you're doing, and we appreciate you being here. With that, we will take a 10-minute break.
Mr. Chairman, may I recommend that the students go to Sweetwater County Commission to find out what we do also and have an opportunity to look at some of our agendas and minutes. And I have a handout I can give you as far as duties of a commissioner. Thank you.
We will take a break and. Thank you. Call this meeting back to order and. As I suspected at the time, we need to clean up a little bit. So we had a motion. To do bonuses, one-time incentives for employees of $500. We had an amendment of $1,000, which was, we voted on and approved for one. We never did approve the original motion to give bonuses. So we need to go back and just vote on that. We have had a motion and a second. Regarding having bonuses, and now the amended amount was $1,000. So with that, is there discussion or questions?
Call for the question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I got a little stuck in the throat there. Thank you. I got a little stuck in the throat there. Uh, any opposed?
Well, to be consistent with the amendment, I have to oppose it, but I really think our employees probably deserve five thousand dollar bonus, but trying to be responsible fiscally.
Make the amendment.
I oppose.
You can amend the motion.
Thank you. So it passes for one. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, got a little sideways there thinking about different things. So. Tab G has been removed and, uh, put off for another day. So we will move on to tab H. Uh, Underground Injection Control Carbon Sequestration Class Six Well. Please come up and introduce yourself and.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to welcome our two presenters. We, uh, met at the Bison, uh, Carbon, uh. Meeting that was held in Rock Springs and, uh, it seemed there was a lot of additional information they could provide to our public. We have received some letters, Lauren and I, and I think the board regarding, uh, how this Bison project might work. So I would like to welcome both of, uh. Frontier and, uh, DEQ. Thank you, Lillian.
Hi, thank you for having me here today. My name's Lily Barca. I'm the, uh, groundwater section manager in the water quality division at DEQ. And my program or my section oversees the Underground Injection Control Program, which class six, uh, falls into. So wanted to, I, I know that there's some questions out there, uh, regarding, um. Does that come up correctly?
No. Let's see if here too.
Okay, um. Carbon sequestration in the state being new, uh, so wanted to provide some information as to how DEQ will be managing these going forward. So I'll be presenting an overview of the Wyoming's Underground Injection Control Program, the primacy that we received, uh, in twenty twenty for the class six program. And then, uh, the permitting process that we go through for these, these wells. So the Underground Injection Control Program consists of six wells. We have primacy of all six here in the states. Uh, class one wells are our deep disposal wells at industrial sites. Uh, you may be familiar with class two, also known as oil and gas, uh, production and disposal wells. Class three are associated with our in situ uranium mining industry. There are actually no class four wells. Those are associated with hazardous waste. Um, and so those are actually banned in the, in the United States. Uh, there are none here in Wyoming. And then class five wells, those are your typical large capacity disposal systems, uh, septic systems. Coben methane wells, uh, for disposal will be associated with those and other just shallower disposal, uh, facilities. And then the class six wells, which I'm here to speak about today for the, um, carbon sequestration. So states, uh, that are interested in becoming the, the main program, uh, we seek primacy and we have to show the Environmental Protection Agency that our regulations are as stringent. Or more protective than the federal regulations, uh, so for us to receive that jurisdiction. So in nineteen eighty-three, we actually received primacy of the class one through five wells. So we've been doing this for quite some time. Uh, we have about ninety class one wells in the, in the states. And then, um, about two thousand class five wells, uh, ranging from rule authorized through those individual large capacity septic systems. Uh, class two wells are administered through our oil and gas commission and class three wells are through our land quality division at the DEQ. Uh, we, we received primacy of our class six program in twenty twenty. Uh, we applied for that primacy in two thousand eighteen, went through some rulemaking, uh, adjustments. And then, um, received that, uh, from, from EPA. We're the second state in the country to receive this, which is a, a, a great accomplishment. North Dakota being the other. Uh, other states that are seeking, uh, class six wells or, or operators in those states, they actually have to go through the Environmental Protection Agency. Uh, so quite a bit of work that will be required to go through them. Uh, Wyoming's been doing this for, uh, setting up this program for quite some times. As you can see, there's a number of statutes and regulations in place just for carbon sequestration. Uh, we started this process back in two thousand nine, uh, working with legislature to come up with a number of, uh, regulations, uh. Outlining unitization, uh, poor space ownership and then, uh, the permitting process. Um, last year, legislature went through, uh, what was the Storage and Sequestration Liability Act. Uh, this identifies who owns that carbon dioxide that's injected and, uh, certificate of the project being issued along with. Release and transfer of liability at the completion of that project. So these are the main parts of carbon sequestration. Uh, there's a capture, the transport and unitization storage. So you may hear the term CCUS. DEQ, uh, for my program, we're primarily interested in the storage aspect or the, the deep disposal aspect of it. So item number four here. So as part of our primacy and setting up the program, we have a pretty lengthy process that starts even before permitting and continues way past permitting. Uh, starting with just informational meetings, um, all the way through, uh, long-term stewardship. This is a process that, uh, starts several years before the permitting, uh, application comes in and continues for tens to even, um. Possibly a hundred years after, uh, injections are completed. So that informational meeting that we hold, we like to see the scope of projects, uh, where that location's going to be. Um, any site characterization that they've done to show that they, they're familiar with the geology and, uh, protection of that, uh, storage units. And then the timeframe that they're anticipating to submit a class six permit application. We also provide them a list of other agencies that they're going to need to get in contact earlier the better so that they can do the, the proper outreach. Um, various groups in DEQ, the oil and gas commission, uh, fishing, uh, game and fish, state lands, uh, BLM. And of course, the county commissioners for planning and zoning purposes. Site characterization is probably the biggest, uh, meat and potatoes part of the, the program, uh, protection of knowing. Faults, fractures, uh, the type of geology, the type of formation they're injecting into. Uh, there's a lot of research and a lot of information that they have to collect. So they may be interested in going and doing a stratigraphic test well. Uh, which is permitted through the oil and gas commission, just to collect that additional information to really know, is this going to be an acceptable location? To place the storage unit? Is it going to be protective to the environment and to the human health and to the, the public, uh, here in Wyoming? We then have a pre-application meeting, uh, forty-five days before we'll receive that application. This is, we want to make sure that they know of all the applications they're going to need to receive. Have they talked to all of the different organizations and agencies that are out there, uh, doing their public outreach? And then, uh, is all of their parts or all of their parts, uh, completed in the application? Uh, so that we can also assess a permit application fee and I can get the appropriate staff in place to do the evaluation. The application is a pretty lengthy process. Uh, there's two parts, just your general information that everyone will have. And then the technical information, um, the site characterization, the area of review, how large that's going to look. Um, the emergency and remedial response plan. Um, our largest component is a financial assurance. Uh, they're going to have to put up bonds for the time that they're, they have the project in place. Um, that's protective of the state and the community. In the event that the operator leaves, we have the funds to go in and, um. Reclaim the well, reclaim the lands. Um, if while they're operating, any kind of emergency responses needed, any additions? That's in addition to the financial assurance. So that bond stays in place until we, um, terminate the permit. We have sixty days to complete a review. Uh, we submit comments, uh, and then any response to those comments restart that sixty day review. These applications are very large and technical. You're looking at three hundred to fifteen hundred pages, uh, for an application. So they are very thorough. People coming in, they, the operators coming in, they, they mean business. They're, they're going to cross every T and dot every I. So we're, we're quite pleased with that. At the end, uh, once we're ready to issue a permit, we'll draft that. Uh, if the application's been determined, complete and technically adequate. We have a sixty day public comment period and at the end of that sixty day public comment period, we're going to hold a public hearing to make sure that we've gathered all comments and we've heard from everyone interested in these projects. Before we can even issue the permit, though, uh, unitization has to be, uh, issued by the oil and gas commission. So landowners. Will have to be, uh, in agreement for leasing their poor space and they'll have to get that unitization order addressed. If that is not completed through the oil and gas commission, I can't issue a permit. So lots of moving parts to this, um, before we, we even move forward to issue that permit. Uh, again, um, so then unitization, a financial assurance, these are going to be very large bonds because. They're going to need to cover permitting, testing, operations, um, plugging and abandonment and then post-injection site care. Uh, you're looking at bonds that could be anywhere between sixteen million and fifty million dollars because of the, the size of the projects. So we're, uh, we have to make sure that that's all in place, uh, prior to permit issuance. And then there's liability insurance that they'll have to cover as well. Um, it's, uh, I believe it's two million dollars per occurrence, up to forty-five million dollars. So pretty large liability insurance coverage, all based on risks that are outlined in the, uh, Water Quality Chapter Twenty-four Rules. We issue the permit, but at this point it's mainly to construct the well. Uh, they'll gather information when, uh, drilling that well. And if they need to do any modifications to the permit based on this new information, the permitting process starts over again. Uh, they'll come in for a permit mod. They'll go through all of those previous steps, public comments, readjusting, um, financial assurance and all of those items, uh, once again. They'll construct the well, collect all the monitoring that they need. Again, permit, uh, modifications as needed. And then they'll, um, they'll be able to apply for that injection. Um, during the injection period, we do collect a fee. Uh, that fee at the end of the project and once their permit is terminated and the project is over, we use that fee for long-term stewardship and to, uh, to evaluate that. Um, that's chapter twenty-nine of our rules and we assess a seven cent per ton, uh, injection fee. That sounds low, but considering these are. Multi-million ton injections, um, it, it's going to be a large sum of money that the state will have to complete, uh, long-term stewardship and evaluations. Project completion, um, they can apply for project completion twenty years following the last injection. Uh, however. They can't get that project completion until the permit is terminated. So if they're not showing the right conditions to terminate that permit and it's actually going to require fifty years. We need them, they're there for fifty years until we terminate the permit and release the liability. And then, uh, long-term stewardship will occur during that closure. Um, as of right now, we have four applications at DEQ, uh, one we received December first of two thousand twenty-one for the North Shore Explorations Painted Reservoir. And that's in Uinta County. Uh, September fifteenth, we received three applications from Frontier Carbon, uh, for both Lincoln and Sweetwater Counties. Um, those are coming up on their sixty day review later in, uh, November. Um, and so hopefully we'll be able to move forward with some public, uh, outreach, public notices, uh, by the end of the year. There's my information. We have a, a website on DEQ for this. We also have a listserv available if anyone's interested to sign up. To receive notices of what's going on with DEQ and class six and, uh, notices of those public notices and hearings that will advance in the future.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Barka?
Yes.
Yes.
In one of the earlier slides, you said that, yeah, the CO2 injection could be used to retrieve oil and gases. That under fracking or something different?
That's enhanced oil recovery. So it's a pretty common practice in the, um, the oil and gas industry. Um, I won't speak too much about it because I'm not an expert in that area, but, uh, there is a component of storage that they go in, they inject the CO2 to, uh, stimulate, stimulate the reservoir to produce more oil.
And that would not be called fracking?
That is not.
Okay.
Other question?
Yeah, industrial siding. How does that enter in?
They'll need to speak to our industrial siding group. Uh, there's a certain threshold that if it's jurisdictional or non-jurisdictional and set up all of those requirements. Alan Edwards, our deputy director and the administrator for the industrial siding, uh. Would probably be the best person to contact for further information on that.
Thank you.
Bonding, um. Sounds like a lot of money, but if we're talking thirty, fifty years down the road, is, does that feel adequate but not punitive at this, at the same time?
Every year, they'll have to go through an annual review of that cost estimate. So, uh, while the first part may be between that range. Um, inflation and other costs, uh, they'll have to do a cost estimate and readjust their financial assurance on an annual basis.
Good. Great. Other questions?
Please put her on, on the list to receive your notice.
Will do.
Much appreciated then. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Very informative.
Sally, do you have a card? You could send it to Sally. You have her information. Sally She maker?
All of our cards are right there.
So that she can disperse it to all of us.
Onto tab I, uh, Frontier Carbon Solutions Introduction. And we have Alicia Summers with us.
Let's see, not known to be. Okay. Hi, good morning, guys. Thanks so much, um, for allowing me time to come back out here and. Reintroduce Frontier Carbon Solutions. You've heard a little bit about us alongside Carbon Capture and their project Bison. I wanted to come out and talk a little bit more about us specifically. And the project that we're doing out in Sweetwater County. Um, so. If you guys have any questions along the way, please feel free. Don't, don't hesitate to stop and ask me. Um, let's go. My name's Alicia Summers. I'm one of the founding partners of Frontier Carbon Solutions. I'm responsible for all reservoir studies and, uh. And permitting and land work at Frontier. We were founded in twenty twenty-one. I know that sounds relatively new considering. But we have a full team of engineers and project managers that have long experience, professional experience in oil and gas industry and. Thankfully, all those same skill sets and experience that they gained during that work kind of lends themselves to gearing us with the proper toolkit to become carbon storage, um, developers. Our sole focus is carbon storage development and our vision is to provide turnkey solutions for emitters across Wyoming so that they can handle their greenhouse gas emissions profile. We, uh, in the early stages of development, project development, we realized that these endeavors are very expensive. And the federal government has set aside, uh, tax credits to incentivize projects of this nature. And so early on, we had to develop a network and strategies to assure that those, uh, tax credits went directly back to the project to develop those. So we feel like we. We've developed that to help finance some of these projects that are, that are very large, um, in dollars. We're fully backed by Tailwater Capital. They have about five billion assets under management across the energy space and infrastructure and they're solely focused on transitional energy and, and, um, infrastructure projects. So going to, um, you know, our, our, how we developed our original carbon project, uh, storage thesis. The whole US was on the table in the beginning as we were trying to figure out where exactly we wanted to build this project and why. And Wyoming um rose to the top super quickly and there's many reasons why. Um, number one, you're rich in minerals, oil and gas and coal, trona and uranium, and not only that, but you have the complementary. Uh, skillset and the workforce that goes alongside of that, and that, that helps these projects as well. And then number two, the industrial cor- corridor that supports power, natural gas processing. Hydrogen and the emerging, emerging um ha- a nuclear economy. And then also you can't, can't do this without geology, the Green River Basin is just tremendous, huge world-class geology. That has great potential for start storing um, large volumes of CO2 permanently. And then what's not listed here, but needs to be mentioned, and we should note that. The forethought and proactiveness of Wyoming and its governing body was huge, I mean, you, your, your state was way ahead. Of its curve and, and establishing early on legislation, rulings, um, guidelines to attract carbon operators like ourselves. And so with, with our, our carbon storage hub being developed here in, in Sweetwater, we can support your energy and industrial emitters. Um, and, and help them resolve their greenhouse gas emissions. So Sweetwater Carbon Storage Hub, um, why is it called that? Well, we're a bunch of energy, uh, engineers and technicals, we're not super creative. I actually stole that line from my partner Robbie, but it's, it's absolutely true, we are, we are not super um creative, but we are good at our job, believe me. Um, it sits at Lincoln, at the corners of Lincoln, Uinta and Sweetwater Counties, um, but. Thought you want to know it's mostly in Sweetwater County, I thought that would, that'd be good little nugget for you guys. Um, we're starting out small by, by storing about one and a half million tons per year. Um, but we plan on growing to about ten million in year twenty fifty. And so there, there are plans for expansion programs, um, as we achieve those targets. And then to circle back to why, CO2 is non-cobustible, non-flammable um gas. It's something that we breathe out, trees take it in, it's, it's just a normal component of the atmosphere. However, it's, it's an ever-growing um, uh, component of greenhouse gas that traps um heat in the atmosphere. So whether we all agree or not, you know, on climate change and what have you. The market sentiment is out there and driving a lot of this, driving for industry, industries um to become green. And so they also drive revenue and that affects communities across, across the states, but Wyoming too. And so they're increasingly pressuring companies to, to, like I said, go green and become either carbon negative or carbon neutral. We recognize that not all processes, not all industrial processes can easily be decarbonized, at least this time. There's still things like boilers that require coal or natural gas, um, uh, to get their, their um, uh, industries working, so. Since they can't easily be decarbonized, we're here to, to provide those industrial emitters a solution for their greenhouse gas. And then, how does it actually work? Okay, so here's a picture, it's a little cartoonish, um, kind of piggybacking off of what Lily provided. Um, we have, it's not, we, so when you go back to actually how it works. If you look at the industrial um side, what we're doing is we're providing capture technology. That's installed and integrated at the industrial side. And so this equipment will divert any gas that you normally see coming off the exhaust stacks. And funnels it to towers where we separate out the CO2. Then we take that CO2 and compress it until it gets into its liquid form. And that's called dense phase CO2, and at that point, it's easily um, and more efficiently transported via pipeline. Out to the wellhead where it's injected um deep into saline sandstone reservoirs. Um, this capture technology that we're working on, we're, we're, we're very conscious uh to design it. To limit water use and, and make it integrated and streamlined with other industrial processes. So that hopefully it symbiotically works with other processes at the industry, uh, to not use as much rest resources um as, as possible to limit those essentially. And then another note I want to point out is that all um. Capture equipment will be located at the industrial site, uh, we envision nothing at the, at the CS hub other than the injection wellhead and associated equipment. We don't intend on buil- building large facilities um at that site, so we're limiting um our footprint there. And as we're looking at the injection site, we're working with our landowners to make sure that we use previously disturbed land. Um, and not make a, a larger footprint that, that's already been, you know, larger than necessary footprint. Um, and that's geology permitting, of course. And then. This next slide is a little bit repetitive, um, but it's important to note, given, you know, what Lily just presented to us, but. I want to, I want to note how important it is, um, that. These classics wells, it's relatively new permitting process. Um, and I can say it's very robust and, and comprehensive, as Lily was going through her, her presentation, I was having a little. You know, post-traumatic stress syndrome, like going, because these permits actually took quite a bit of time and she's not joking at all. Um, these rules and guidelines are focused on permanent storage of CO2, we're not envisioning any enhanced oil recovery um at this time. And it's, it's, it's purely for anthropogenic CO2, meaning CO2 coming off industrial sites. Um, and these rules and guidelines, this is the permit, by the way, and this is four hundred pages, this is what, I submitted three of these to Lily back in September. This is double-sided, I just wanted to show you like the huge body of work this becomes and it's. It's developed from, um, you know, experts across um many disciplines uh to put this, this together, it's not just geological. Petrophysical engineering, but then like Lily said, we go into. The monitoring side of things, uh, uh, emergency response if, if needed, that's, that's all developed in this permit. And I would say it's the most robust of any permitting class um out there, and then, um. But to point out like what Lily said, once we get this permit and we start injecting CO2. It's not done, and we're still on a hook to continuously monitor, um, measure pressures, make sure that CO2 is not leaking. To any underground water sources, that's super important, or any hydrocarbon um minerals that are, you know, formations that are producing oil and gas. Super important here, so um, just wanted to show you this, this huge, this huge body of work, it's, yeah, I had a little bit of PTSD over that.
Good question, what kind of casing do you use to make sure it doesn't leak?
Yeah, exact, so that's, that's another, that well planning is in here as well, it's a chrome blend to make sure that it doesn't, number one, doesn't leak. And then it's cemented with a anti-corrosive um cement, not just within the zone that we complete to inject the CO2. But all the way to the top so that it doesn't leak into any underground drinking water sources or formations. So we, we build these to last, so they're, they're expensive, it's not, not normal, um, carbon still like oil and gas or, or other, other operations out there. Let's see. Oh, and just to go back to monitoring, so we are on the hook to monitor uh from gradle to grave until Lily tells us, to Lily at DEQ tells us that. It's not closed, so even once we stop monitoring, we, I mean, stop injecting, we are continuously monitoring as well. And that could be a twenty or fifty-year period. And then also to note, going back to the bonding, when, when DEQ received primacy from the EPA. Uh, they were very thoughtful, they wanted to make sure that, you know, everything was remediated once the site was, was ceased injection. And so we are on the hook for, um, for this first well, it was over thirty million dollars of bonding and the insurance that goes alongside of that. To make sure that these wells, when we're done, are plugged and abandoned, or to assure in a, you know, downside scenario when Frontier is no longer here. The money is set aside to take care and mediate anything that needs to be remediated at the site. And then also that fund that we contribute to per ton, that seven cents per ton, that goes to the state so they can continue to monitor these as well. So how does CO2 stay, stay trapped? Um, so there's, there's lots of ways, so the first one is, is depth, and I don't mention that here, but it's super important. This CO2 is in a dense phase where it behaves more like a liquid. Um, you want to make sure that you inject it in a zone that's deeper than at least twenty-five hundred feet to keep it in that dense phase. Um, if it's shallower than that, it easily uh transforms back to its gassy state where it can easily escape via. Wellbores or faults or what have you back to the surface, and our goal is to keep that CO2 sequestered forever and ever. Uh, number two is structural, so we make sure that these are going deep underneath several layers of impermeable rock. Uh, and that's the first, the first layer that keeps it down there and think. You know, I tell my kiddos this all the time, they ask, how do you make sure it stays down there, we go over the slide all the time, I practice at home. And I tell them, it's like when you put hot cocoa in a, in a coffee cup, it's not going to go anywhere, the same thing for the CO2. Um, and then next is residual, as the CO2 goes into the saline sandstone reservoir, it displaces the fluid. Um, the fluids in the reservoir and gets stuck in those tiny little pores. And then next, solubility, it actually, as it gets stuck in those pores. It eventually dissolves with the fluids in the reservoir and becomes more like, I think, carbonated water or soda, kind of like that, and that's over time. And then eventually, once it's dissolved and becomes, um, you know, dissolved in the reservoir. It starts to react with the minerals in the reservoir, uh, called mineralization and becomes solids. And at that point, it's there for an ever, forever and ever, and think, um, like fifty, hundred thousand years, um, that this all takes place.
But it's not going to turn into coal.
It won't turn into coal, unfortunately, no. Um, so this slide, I, you know, I, I talk, Lily and I probably spoke a lot about plume, a CO2 plume, what does it actually look like? And so I just wanted to show you this picture, this is actually our, the Nugget Sandstone Reservoir, this is about, we'll be injecting in about thirteen thousand five hundred feet underground. Well below any hydrocarbon production or groundwater. And it's got a, a, a thick layer of ceiling rock on top of it, which is not shown. So as we inject that CO2 in this reservoir, this is about eight hundred feet thick. The top two hundred to three hundred, where you see that umbrella-like structure, is where the CO2 is actually going and displacing fluids. Now, this is like within years one through twenty, uh, and as you get to years twenty-five and then on. This starts to kind of um make its way through the reservoir as it becomes, I just call it comfortable. It becomes comfortable, the densities are different in the CO2 and the reservoir fluids. So as those densities start to align, it starts to work its magic geochemistry, uh, like speaking mineralization. It starts um going down further in the reservoir. And so you can see the horizontal view, uh, on the left, the plume is a lot larger than uh the view on the right, so. Just wanted to prob- provide you a little picture of that. And then the next slide, we've already reached a lot of milestones, um, thankfully, it took. Well over a year to get these three classics permits, I'm submitted to DEQ where they're reviewing them currently. Um, alongside that, in parallel, we are working with experts on the, on the technology, the capture technology side. That includes Shell Can Solve, working with them to make sure that these projects are actually viable, that we can go out to industry and capture the CO2. And, and make sure it goes exactly where it needs to go. And then Schlumberger, I couldn't have done this work without them, they were responsible for helping me uh accumulate all the disciplines necessary to put together this. This body of work. And then, um, of course, Carbon Catcher, whom you've met with Project Bison, and then Black and Beach, they're doing a lot of our engineering work as well. And then our partners, Tellwater Capital. And then, I haven't mentioned this yet, but like Lily said, you know, uh, when we started this project, even before we founded um Frontier. Carbon Solutions, we wanted to make sure that we were working hand in hand with the landowners, that we weren't coming in and. We certainly did not want to bully anyone, we want to be good partners and neighbors with everyone, so we started working with the landowners, the state. And the other state agencies, uh, um, industrial siding, Wyoming Game and Fish, all of them, to make sure we were doing exactly what we needed to do to be good stewards and neighbors. Um, of not only Sweetwater County, but Wyoming in general. And we also want to make sure that we help your industrial partners as well, we understand it's tough, you know, we all come from energy backgrounds. You know, I, I started my career on the upstream side in oil and gas, want to make sure those don't go away, so. Anything we can help industry solve their greenhouse gas emissions, that's, that's our sole focus. Um, but happy to answer any questions, uh, hopefully I didn't miss anything, uh, Ask Away, and you have my card. Feel free to contact me anytime and we're always here.
Thank you, appreciate that, very informative. One question I had, I, maybe I was writing or something, direct air capture, is that, saw them in the slide. Uh, is that something you're doing as well, or just from the industrial sites?
Right, so Frontier, think of us as a service provider and direct ca- air capture is certainly something that we're offering, and in fact, we partnered up with Carbon Capture. They will be doing the direct air capture, that's their proprietary technology. But they've partnered with us and asked us to take the CO2 that they get from the, from their work and store it underground permanently. Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
That was a good point, thanks.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Other questions?
It's still new, I, I think you're still working with some partners, uh, private partners in the Granger areas, is that correct?
So.
Have you secured the three permitted sites?
So we have, we're still working with the landowners, we have the sites, um, uh, one site is secure, we have poor space. You can, you can imagine this is a new project, and when we approached the landos, landowners originally, they thought, what, you want our poor space for what? Uh, had no idea, they understood minerals and what have you, but the poor space was definitely new, so it's been an educational um, uh, experience to say the least. And not only with the landowners, but with the state as well. Um, where we're envisioning our project, we have three state, um, state lands, and so we're working with um Osley. Uh, and Cheyenne to, to secure that poor space with the state as well.
So is it going to be similar to a mineral, uh, oil and gas lease, but you're not going to have the royalties or anything?
It is very similar to oil and gas, and the landowners will receive royalties for every ton of CO2 that we sequester. Yes, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So very similar to oil and gas.
Other question?
Good point, thank you.
Well, thank you, Summer.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, very informative, and I'm sure there'll be many questions as we, as we go along down the road. Uh, tab J has been removed, and so we are on to executive session in our agenda. Um, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Chairman?
Commissioner Wendling.
I'll make a motion, move into executive session for real estate and legal.
That includes. Oh, handling, okay, thank you, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we're in the executive session, like a break before.
Mr. Chairman, can we have ten?
We can.
Thank you.
Ten minutes, we'll be back at ten forty, ten forty.